March 22nd, 2022, Town Council meeting to order at 7:06 PM. Start with the Budge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of South. More for the rights.
To reply, United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Fourth item of business, we have two proclamations to read them to the record. The first is for developmental disabilities awareness month. So whereas this is the 35th year, the United States has recognized and celebrated March as National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. And whereas on February 26, 1987, President Ronald Reagan officially declared proclamation 5613 in March National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. The proclamation called for people to provide understanding, encouragement, and opportunities to help persons with disabilities to lead productive and fulfilling lives. And whereas where every whereas everyone wants and deserves to enjoy life, feel productive and secure. But in March, we take extra steps to raise awareness about the supports and rights of people with developmental disabilities, and to celebrate their contributions to our community and society as a whole. And whereas all individuals, agencies, and organizations supportive of people with developmental disabilities are encouraged to observe the month of March with appropriate observances and activities directed towards increasing public awareness of the contributions and potential Americans with developmental disabilities. Now therefore, I, Steve Jones, Chair of the Town Council, on behalf of the Town Council and community at large, recognize March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, contributions of all town residents who live with developmental disabilities, dated at Tolland, Connecticut, this 22nd day of March. And second, we have a proclamation recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. Whereas April 2022 marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act. And whereas fair housing is the legal right of every American and is important in ensuring all Americans a free choice of housing, location limited only by one's means and or desires. And whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout the United States should be made available to all citizens throughout, without regard to race, color, national origin, sex, religion, familial status, or the presence of children or disability. And whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout the state of Connecticut should be made available to all citizens without regard to race, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, religion, familial status, or the presence of children, disability, parents' house, sexual orientation, age, except minors, lawful source of income, veteran status, or gender identity or expression. Whereas this law of this nation and our state seek to ensure such equality of choice for all transactions involving housing. Now therefore, the Talon Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of Talon, proclaim April 2022 as Fair Housing Month, and request that all citizens of this of our community reaffirm their commitment to fair housing for all, and wholeheartedly recognize these rights and responsibilities throughout the year. In this, where I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of town to be affixed on this 22nd day of March 2022. So we are on to item number five, which is public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within jurisdiction of the Town Council. If you are on Zoom, there is the raise hand function. If you are on a mobile device, you can hit star nine. So that will open the floor to any public participation. Seeing no public participation, we will move on. Item six, there are no public hearing items. Item seven, a reports of boards. The Council, are there any Bertrand group updates? Nope, alright. We'll move on to item 70, reports of Town Council liaisons. And I'm going to start from my right, so Councilman Mutechak.
I share, again, I'm just gonna recap the May 7th, because I read the minutes, if you don't mind.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, perfect. Sounds a little lengthy, and I think John Steve got something already. So this is for the May 7th meeting for the Mental Health Task Force. It sounds like they sent you guys, June Vice Chair, some recommendations. And just some of those recommendations is, one, creation of youth advisory board to give them put on potential programming. Two, a survey to youth, to the youth in Talon, the town of Talon, concerned what programming that they'd like to see offered and to be engaged in. Three, in addition, an expansion of youth recreational opportunities that the task force recommends that definitely be appropriate in the town to the Board of Ed budget. Two main areas, A, team leadership, and B, skills for adolescents. That was May 7th, and then, I think, May 7th?
March 7th.
I'm so sorry, no one even corrected me. March 7th, right, March 14th was the recreation.
Some of us were just hopeful that it was actually.
Gonna throw that out there.
Budgets done, and everything's accomplished. Okay, anyways, March 14th, Recreation Advisory Board. That one was a great one, because the local organizations were there, the youth football, soccer, baseball, even youth lacrosse, just regarding the team field usage. And overall, the teams were happy with the fields. Dave is at Garrett. He had some concerns with one of the fields, that there's drainage issues at crossfarms, and that was the lack of fields. He also did mention, he's in favor, they're in favor of the Miracle Field, but they are still concerned that they could replace some of their fields, and I reminded them that we have a survey of the area. And the idea wasn't to replace any kids. Right, that's how I understand that whole process we're going through. March 17, the Commission of People with Disabilities met, I was unable to attend because of our budgets last week. Minutes have not been posted. Yesterday, John, right, the Mental Health Task Force was canceled because of lack of quarrel. And then Wednesday, Tammy, Lisa and I have this special meeting for our student only. Just kind of basically talking about the arms going tracking we're doing.
Okay.
And then I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
I had nothing from the last meeting to now.
Alright, and I have the same, other than the Water Commission's meeting was postponed to the 28th, and the Conservation Commission's meeting is on Thursday, which I'll be unable to make, because our public hearing is that same day and time.
So Vice Chair, I have two claiming zoning met on the 14th. There was a public hearing on the zoning regulation amendment to allow for properties in the Talon Village area to be eligible for a master plan overlay zone, and there was extensive discussion on that. And for old business zoning regulation amendment to recreational and medical marijuana and retail use exclusion of marijuana as agriculture discussed at length, the distance from residential zones that retail establishments must be. So there was a lot of discussion on those two topics, and if you, if you really want to get into the detail, I recommend you look at the minutes, because I stayed until 11:50, I couldn't last any longer. And the meeting ended, I think, probably 15 minutes after I checked out. And WPCA met on March 15th. They're writing a proposal for a new pump at the Gateway Pump Station across from Big Y in anticipation of the Santee project. And then they talked about the burning connection fees, and those have increased. 24 Woodside Drive off of Old Post Road connected recently, and then 522 Old Post Road Connection application is pending. They anticipate hookup of that location within one month, and then beyond that, they moved their budget, which remained flat. And that's all I have.
Chair Regan, Councilman Murray.
Yes, the Agriculture Commission met on March 7th, but I was unable to attend. They are talking about Farm's Table Dinner. And some, yes, it's, it sounds like they're going to try to have the Farm's Table Dinner again this year. That's what the minutes reflect. That they're, they reported on updates on the Talon Fresh Program with vouchers that are used at the Tom Farmer's Market. And they talked a little bit about Restaurant Week, but there's not a lot of details in these minutes, so I don't really know what's happening there. And then the Historic District Commission, on March 16th, they heard a application for a certificate of acceptance, and that's their fault, for property for windows in the historic district. They have, it sounds like a couple more windows coming up that they're talking about, and they talked about the sidewalks a little bit more. That seems to be it, based on this.
Thank you, Councilman Murray. We have other counselors, so we can move on to item eight, which is new business. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the interim Town Manager to execute and deliver on behalf of Talon, an application and contract from the State Library Association for a year 2223. I believe our Town Clerk is also on tonight, but we see in particular here.
Okay, this is a historical records preservation grant that we apply for every year. And Kathy Pagan is on here, online here to discuss it and give you whatever answers to questions that you need.
Good evening, everybody, Kathy Pagan here, nice to see you all. The historic grant we apply for every single year, we get $5,500 from the Connecticut State Library, and it's only to be used for preserving documents from, that we have in our vaults. The last few years, we've been doing a project preserving the old maps in the back of the vault. They're actually original maps, they go back to between, well, they started at around 1900. They go through 1950s to 60s. Currently, we're up to a range of, I think, the 1940s through the 1960s. We're up to Book Four, which is the book that we would work on this year. If you authorize Lisa to authorize me to send the application in for the grant. It would be about 80 maps total. Our vendor came in to do an inventory and take a look at them and their condition. They would take them out of the book that they've been just glued into for the past 70 years. They would remove them, preserve them with special deacidificating chemicals, and slide them into vinyl folders for us to make them suitable for hanging and preserving in the cases that we have in the vaults.
Thank you. One quick question, Kathy, are those documents once preserved, are they accessible to the public? You know, like if they came in and said, hey, I wanted to check out some.
Yes.
Great, are there any other questions, council members? Alright, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in 8.1. So my Councilman Newt, are there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Murray. All's in favor, everyone is in the room, so signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Sentence that passes unanimously. Thank you, Kathy, go on, go forth, get some grant.
Thank you so much, everybody, have a good night.
Kathy, thank you.
Alright, on to item 8.2, the Talon Tax Relief Program, also known as Ordinance 60. And I believe you have Jason Lawrence on as well to share information, and there was information shared in our packet, so.
Yes, and Jason is working ill tonight, but he's here, thank you, Jason. I really appreciate you coming on. I've given you ability to be able to share your screen, Jason. And this, just a little overview, this is, we had started this a few months ago regarding the local tax relief program to do some revisions to it, and I'm going to let Jason take it over, and he can share a screen to help with some of the charts, and we'll go from there. Jason, you have to unmute.
And before Jason unmutes this one, I also think Bob Rubino is here to speak or be present, but they also are here tonight if they would like to speak. I know they are the original, maybe looking at Mr. Lawrence on the ordinance, so.
Yep, and you're right, Bob Rubino is here as well, and I know they have spoken to one another. I'm not sure where it stands, Jason was still in the process of trying to review everything. I think he got from Bob yesterday or the day before, and like I said, Jason's been out there, so. Go ahead, Jenny.
Hi, everybody. I did, I did speak to Bob today. He sent me over an email on Saturday with some ideas on some revisions to the program, but maybe we'll get to those as we get a little further along, because they weren't part of the packet. Bear with me a little bit, trying to do this on my laptop and bouncing between screens, it's tough, so.
Got to do it.
Yeah, I'm just, I want to find the right document where I share. Doesn't allow me to, to be logged into my desktop at work at the same time, so I have to email everything to myself. I don't know how much of an overview you need of Ordinance 60, but 20 years ago, it was a program created to give relief to those who were getting priced out of town due to taxes increasing every year. The original creators of the program, my father, Walter Lawrence, Bob Rubino, and Bev, Bev, Bevity, were part of, at least three that were part of the program, originators. It worked for seven years until they found there was a lot of problems with it, just with the administration of it. Things that they didn't think were going to happen, happened, and created problems. There was trouble trying to track how assessments changed, how some of their credits that were in the system, or reductions, or freeze, were changing. And in 2007, they amended the program and made some new guidelines, as well as started over, essentially. So the people that were in the program, and they felt, when I say they, I mean the assessor, felt that their numbers were correct. They did like a hard save on their taxes at that time. So in 2019, when I did the revaluation, it was time to take a look at the program. And we knew there were some issues, and every year we had to go in and manually make some corrections. But in 2019, we found somebody who didn't even get a tax bill at all. So that was a big red flag. So when it left our office, it looked like it had, it should have got a tax bill, and it, it just didn't happen somewhere between my office and the tax office. So it was a program issue, and we looked into the program issue, and we found a bunch of problems that were lingering. And talking to the programmers on how to fix it, really, they said that the problem was with how our program is written. It's a local option, and it really needed to be simplified in order to, to continue. And realistically, that's how the state does it, and a lot of other towns do it. There's one other town, Guilford, that has almost the same program as us. And I talked to the assessor there at length, and she pulls her hair out every year with their applicants. And they have multiple districts, so things change even further with different mill rates in different areas of town. And, you know, we really can't tell the taxpayer what the benefit of this program is until after, you know, the first year, because it's based off of the mill rate, and when they're applying, we haven't even determined the mill rate yet. So there's some issues with the program that really need to be revised, be a little bit more transparent, and allow you guys, as well as Finance Director, Town Manager, to know what's coming. We don't know what the cost of this program is until we get all of our applications in. Well, that deadline is May 15th, and you guys have, you know, you already want to be well, well, in your way on determining what the mill rate is. Not that 10,000, 20,000 is a big difference from year to year, but you would rather be exact, right, I assume. And if we had a credit amount that everybody got based on the year that they came in, a flat amount, then we would know what that number is well ahead of time. And it would come down again, I guess, to that application period, May 15th. But I think we could be a lot closer to what the actual number would be when we're doing our projections. Anyway, so we met in 2020 to give you guys an update on where the program is now. It's, it's part of our charter that it has to be reviewed in the year following the revaluation. So we did that, and I brought up some of these factors at that point. And the council at the time said that we should probably think about revising the program, at least the benefit portion, which seems to be the part that's broken. And let's come up with something. So since that time, there's been a lot of, a lot of problems with the world. So it's, it's really taken a backseat to my priorities, and getting information from our vendor was tough, and it wasn't something that I could get myself without endless nights trying to calculate all these numbers going back, and then finding out that in 2007, they were all changed systematically, so you couldn't even trace them back to the beginning. So here we are today, I've reached out to Bob Rubino, and he's gotten back to me about some possible changes. What I put in the packet were some changes that I thought should be made to the benefit, and didn't have a chance to run those really through Bob at the time that I had to have this to you guys. So what you have in the packet. I don't know if you, do I have to hit something, Lisa, so to actually share my screen, or do you?
You go in under Share Screen, you'll see the screens you can share. You click on the one, and then you hit the word share.
Face that close? Share Screen. I see.
You have it?
I think so.
There you go.
Okay. There we go.
So what you see here is the bottom of that spreadsheet that shows all the participants who we have in the program at the moment. There's 169 participants. The cost, the annual cost in year, well, this is 2019 numbers, was 160,000. The program is written up, so it cannot exceed one half of 1% of the budget. So for the 21 budget, that max cost was $291,000, and we're nowhere near that. So we're at 0.28% of the budget. So I started running some other scenarios, because to make this easier, you can see that these amounts here are all over the place. They're, what it is, is it's a, it's a freeze of your taxes. So what we do is, year one, your taxes don't go up. Year two, your taxes, the difference will be what the mill rate increased, given that the mill rate does go up, versus what you would have paid last year. So in the first year, for some of these people, it's $180, $130, so, and it all depends on, you know, any change to the mill rate and your valuation, too. Another part of this is, it was determined back in 2007 that any land over your building lot is taxable at current, at the current mill rate. So what happens is, I say your taxes are $3,000 this year. Next year, the mill rate comes out, your taxes should be $3,100. Well, we say, because you're on the freeze program, you, you're only going to pay $3,000. However, because you have 10 extra acres of land, that 10 acres of land will cost you another $150 in taxes. So your, your taxes are going to be $3,150. So it actually does go up slightly, but it's only because your excess land is not frozen. So that's one of the moving factors that has caused a lot of problems, because between the system trying to calculate that and keeping track of that, because now it's asking, the system asks itself, which number's higher? So there's a lot of ifs and buts that come on. And I showed you guys two years ago, scenario where we had a veteran who had one reduction, because he was a veteran, and his veteran disability rating went up, and it doubled and then tripled over the course of like three years. At the same time, a portion of his house had a crumbling foundation, and it was repaired. All of these are moving parts, and basically, the computer system had an aneurysm, and it couldn't figure it out itself. So even the program, and that's worst case scenario, but that bill was not right. And then one of the people that came in and said, hey, I didn't get a bill, even though I knew they were supposed to get a bill, but their taxes went down, and it should have actually went up, because there was no reason why some parts of the reduction were even in the system. So we had to go through and check all of the bills before they were released last year, just to make sure that we were okay with each one of them. And that, the timing of that is always tough, because, you know, we're finishing up. You guys are finishing up the budget. All of a sudden, we have this mill rate, alright, let's run the bills, and everybody wants that out immediately. And it takes us, you know, days, if not a week, to do that. And usually, that falls right when assessor school is. So for years, my deputy hasn't been able to attend school, because that week is, you know, the first week of June, and bill's got to go out, and that takes priority, which with an older deputy that was looking to retire, it didn't really matter. But now I have younger people in the office, and they're looking for education, continuing education, so it plays a role. So these are the scenarios that I worked up, just to test it against what we offer now, which is that, on the cost of the town, 160,000 a year. And I said, what if we did $1,000 credit for everybody in the program? And each one of these scenarios, as you toggle over, is what that does to the overall benefit. Does it pass our test of one half of 1% of the budget? Has these passed, this fails? So I started, I don't know why I started with $1,000, I, many things going on, I guess. So if you look over this spreadsheet, you'll see that this is everybody. And then some of these over here in the red show that there's, their, their taxes would go up this amount, because $1,000 isn't enough for them. So do we really want to raise people's taxes based on that scenario? Not really, I don't think I need to. So as you see with some of these, if, if $1,000 credit, and you keep the people that were over $1,000 at $1,000, this is the cost, 215. That's 0.37%, that passes. If you give those people, oh, this is a breakdown, so five years, you get $1,000, 10 years, you get $2,000. So I was kind of just running these blind, thinking, what would pass the test, what would, what would fail the test? And if we anticipate more people entering the program, this will quickly fail the test. So some of these that are really close to a half a percent are going to fail if the numbers go up. But in the beginning of this program, the people that wrote it thought that this was going to go through the roof, and they put limits on everything, because they thought that a lot of people would apply. My thought is, people's incomes have increased, household incomes have increased, kids are moving back home after they go to college. Or husband and wife are working, so their retirement monies put them out of reach of this program. And the income level is 60-something thousand annually, so that's, it's not a incredibly low number, but it's, that's a, that's a healthy number for somebody that might need tax assistance. that's a that's a healthy number for somebody that might need tax assistance. So all these different scenarios are this. And I'll have you got, you guys can look at those as you want. So then I get an email from Bob over the weekend on Saturday. Let's see, how do I unshare now?
At the bottom of your screen, the thing should come up and say stop sharing or it might be at the top of your screen.
Oh yeah, there it is, yeah. Now let's try this one of Bob's here. Bear with me for a second.
Are you pulling up Bob's spreadsheet?
I'm trying to, it looks like I did not send it to my Gmail, so I have to email it to myself. Hold on a second. I'll try to answer any questions for anybody if you have any so far.
Is it saved on the J drive?
It's in an email.
Email.
My emails are full because I've been dealing with trial and all kinds of other things that are going on in my office. There it is. Sorry about this. All right, this should come to me in a second here. Bob's premise, which is very similar, except he took it another level. When I originally ran these numbers a year ago, I came up with an average an average credit per year. And I kind of really didn't look at it, but it was just under 1,000, just under is Bob on, he might have it, he could share it.
It's not part of our agenda, right? No, because unfortunately, Bob was here, I don't know where he is now. Did you see him?
I'm here.
Bob, would you, by any chance, would you be able to share your information if I give you the ability to share it?
Actually have his PowerPoint, I can do that.
Yeah, I think it would be better to share the PowerPoint Lisa, that I think.
Perfect, okay, thank you, Bob.
Email to the council as well.
Could you send the PowerPoint to me in an email? Is there any chance you can get it now and then I'll just share it with the town council?
For the minute, for a minute as well.
Lisa, this is Bob again.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just sharing you the PowerPoint because the Excel spreadsheet was not sanitized, it has material on it which really isn't appropriate for public viewing.
Jason just said.
I sent it over, Bob.
And I just to the council, is that it, Jason?
No, just opened it up.
There we go. Okay, if you can escape Lisa, that will go away, yeah, I'm gonna just do that. How's that?
So councils are where it was forwarded from Lisa, so you can copy all your personal or your council email. Can I just take a moment to load, I just got the work on my computer.
Everybody see that, let's see my screen? Yeah?
Yeah. We see it. You got label editing. There you go, and then you could just do slideshow up at the top.
Okay, I'll leave it this way.
All right.
So this is Bob's PowerPoint that he put together. I looked it over quickly today and agree with what he's written. Do you want me to read it to you or?
Be able to figure out feeling also, you have to talk too much, but I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions.
Would you like Bob put this together to talk about it, Jason?
Sure.
Would you mind?
I'm fine. Bob's all right.
Okay, Lisa, Bob Rubino 296 Wykel. You know, for all the reasons that Jason explained, what maybe we thought naively would be a very easy program to administer a tax freeze really became unmanageable. So the fourth bullet, I posed the question, how do we reduce the administrative overhead or cost? And maybe come up with a step benefit that mimics the 20-year tax freeze data that Jason shared. So on the next slide, in the the spreadsheet that Jason shared, there was some interesting demographic data that talks a little bit about average or the participant household income. And one of the things that jumped out at me was if you look at the right side of the chart, if you assume, and I think it's a good assumption, that the income distribution in town should be some kind of bell curve. Why then is the bottom third income distribution of this group truncated on the right, why does it decrease? So the last bullet, I postulate, maybe there's a group here that says, you know, this current program isn't worth participating in. The benefits too small for me to go through all of the paperwork. Or maybe it's just too difficult to to predict, is there any benefit at all? So I'm going to bookshelf that for a moment, keep that in the back of your brain. But if you look at this chart, you see that there is kind of a shift between the income of the married households and the unmarried. That's the second thing, maybe to keep in the back of our brain. The third slide of four, next one. If you look at the average benefit of each of the groups that have been participating over the past 20 years, so there is 20 slots. You, the first thing that jumps out is that the tax freeze is almost a linear curve, you could draw a straight line through it. And the slope of that line is it's $93 a year. So every year and you're in the program, you get about $93 more than the previous year. So for those 20 years, the average participant nets about $1,000 benefit, some more, some less. Last slide. So from that, maybe what we can do is just simply say, what if we gave you $100 more every year that you participate? And at the beginning of the program, because some of the participants were going to get shortchanged upon entry in year one, you get $250. And then every year thereafter, it's $100 times the number of years. So this is a very easy thing for Jason to explain to the prospective candidates who want to participate, which I think is a big improvement over what he's currently faced to do. So what this, just this very simple program of the 169 participating households, 137 would have an increased benefit and only 33 would have a decreased benefit. So I think the next task is for Jason to kind of tweak the numbers and say, well, at what point do I want to manage the exceptions, the exceptions being those people who are shortchanged? Do you just grandfather them? Do you let them sit at their current benefit until they catch up with the curve, that kind of thing? But just using this simple curve, the program cost would go from 160K to 197K, which is about 68% of the program cap. And I would recommend you stick to something like this because remember, I told you there could be a group that might jump on board when they see in year one, you get a $250 benefit. So, you know, just to summarize, simple to administer, easy to understand. It mimics the benefit of the tax freeze. And, you know, we can play around with the numbers. We might even consider offering maybe a bigger starting benefit for those who are unmarried. Because a single income is particularly stressed in running a household as it is compared to two. So I'll leave it there.
All right, thank you, Bob.
I lost you there for a second.
I was saying, is anyone to add before I can open the floor to any questions and councils have a comment before we do that, but.
Um, I just added one other. I can't see Bob's document, so no, go ahead, go ahead.
You want to take your screen down? Stop.
There you go. I would say personally, I think I'm sure a lot of people would agree is I wouldn't want anyone with decreased benefits. I'd probably want to keep those people wherever they are, let them step up. If we were to move forward with a step up benefit program, you know, we want those 33 people or 33 households to keep their benefits that they've earned over the lifespan of the program, so. But 137 increase would be great, so that's just my one quick comment, Jason, I don't know. And I shouldn't speak for the whole council, I feel like I don't want to suddenly put a higher bill to people that have expected a certain benefit over a period of time, so. With that, are there any questions, commentary from council members? I think the purpose of tonight's meeting too is not to officially go ahead and think, but is or is Jason, I can maybe present a final, because it would have to be an ordinance change to require a hearing, if I'm correct?
Yep.
So.
Take a public hearing and anything you have to say.
So thank you both for putting the work in on this. I guess I'm struggling a little bit with, then it's, this is not a freeze, because if I'm hearing this correctly, if the taxes go up 5% and your tax bill increases by that amount, you're going to get $100 credit. So every year, the seniors' taxes are theoretically going to go up. As long as it's, if it's less than or more than the $100 per year, correct?
This potential potentially could. On average, it's, was it $948, or I'm sorry, $98 on average per year on Bob's sheet? If we were a little bit higher than that on average, I mean, then it should kind of cover it, but potentially there could be a year when the mill rate increases more. If the mill rate ever went down because we had an increase in the grand list, then their tax bill would go down because they're still going to receive that next year's credit.
So I guess, I guess I just, I I'm still struggling with it because it's not a tax freeze at that point. And if I look at some of these homes, like I've lived in talent for lots and lots of years, but I owned my home for 27 years. And I live in a 1966 raised ranch, it is not in any way, shape or form a luxurious house. And my taxes are about $7,000 a year. So if I were to go into a program like this, you're, it's, I guess I'm looking at a house here, what one of these numbers might be comparable, I'm trying to remember back what my taxes were in 2000, which I want to say that is probably around $3,400, $3,500 at that point. So my taxes have doubled in that time and if I'm, if it was frozen at 3,400 and I do that same math, I'm not, I'm coming out with a credit of 2,220, which is less. So to me, I guess the premise of the ordinance was to freeze seniors' taxes. So because their their income is limited, but this is not doing that, it's just going to give them a credit toward their taxes and they're still at the whims and mercy of a council to keep the budget under control or they get hit with it, so that's my struggle right now, I guess, trying to figure this out. More statement than I guess anything else.
Yeah, I think I definitely need to look over what Bob has given me more extensively, but what, from what I know from trying to administer this for the 10 years I've been in town, is that when somebody comes in new and fresh, we say, when they ask us if there's any help for seniors, I say, yeah, there's a freeze program. It essentially freezes your taxes unless, and then I go through all the different scenarios of why it wouldn't be frozen. So they have to give me their their income taxes, they have to give me their bank statements, they have to give me a lot of information that nowadays people don't want to share. But you know, I have to tell them that this is, you know, if you want the benefit, this is what you need to do, this is part of the program, we need to know what your income levels are. It's, you know, it's a risk they're taking, but if they really need the assistance, you know, that's, that's what we're here for, but I think you guys wanted to actually increase the assistance. Last time we talked about it, kind of give them a little bit more, we've been losing participants not increasing. And we've been, that number has gone down over the years as far as how much we've been, this is the program cost to town, so. Trying to come up with a, maybe a better method, I mean, like Bob's method of $100 a year, maybe it should be $200. You know, that's why I have all these scenarios in my spreadsheet, because I said, what, at what threshold do you want to be at? Do you want to, you want to be really close to that half of 1% of the budget? Do you want to change it to it's three quarters of 1% of the budget? So you can give everybody more, I mean, if you're revising a local ordinance, then, yeah, I guess you could revise as much of it as you wanted to.
I think we need to consider whether or not we think the half is a good number, because they, we don't have the total tax that people are paying in here, but for instance, if somebody who has 25,855 But for instance, if somebody who has twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars is their total income, if they're paying twenty-five hundred dollars in a tax bill, they're paying ten percent of their income to property taxes. So the percent that we looked at, that half percent, may be something worth considering. I just don't know how I feel about just the flat sum thing. I don't know how that, that's to me not a tax freeze. It's a, it's a credit program toward your taxes that's going to continue to increase every year because taxes don't go down, they always go up. So it's going to give you pressure on their income. So I don't know if we could look at a scale, like if your income is in here and here, or you're going to be there and there or something, but my interest is just finding a way to keep my seniors here.
The state circuit breaker program is written similar to what you're saying, but it is a credit as well. But we get reimbursed from the state for it. But they do separate married versus unmarried and income levels. And then based on that income level, depends on what your credit is. So, but that is a credit, it's not, it's nothing to do with the assessment. Uh, the, the proposal for us as a credit really simplifies the process. This year with only two of us in the office, it was just another thing that you have to do. And it's the last minute of the last hour to get this done, to make sure the tax bills go out correctly. And when they don't, people get upset about it. And then when you correct their tax bill by telling them it's more, now they call you, they don't call me, they call Lisa, they call Mike, they call Steve Werber, they call whomever's. And, you know, they don't, they don't call me, they call the head of the, of the whole thing to, to complain. So, yeah, I mean, it is what it is, but I just would like it to be easier to administer. And right now with all the errors that happened between people not getting tax bills or getting incorrect bills and then telling them, well, it's actually more. It's tough.
I absolutely respect it. It's, as it is right now, is very hard to administer. I, I absolutely understand that. I think we have to, to look at that and figure out how we can do it. I think we have a lot to talk about.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a lot of good information here. Expanding access, I think, is the key point here in terms of making it, rather than having to write an income information and other tax related information. If you just have it based off longevity, I think at least that's the intent, right, Jason? Is the more years you're here, you get more benefits each year. You know, if you're here for ten years, you get X dollar, you get twenty year here and so on and so forth. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, the current benefit is zero for year one. So if you're really struggling to pay your taxes, you got, that first year, you get nothing. Or, and it takes, if you look at this spreadsheet as you go up, it takes, it takes all the way to two thousand nine to get over a thousand dollars. Somebody that's getting over a thousand dollars off their tax bill. Is three, four, five hundred dollars enough when you, when you have the taxes that we have in town?
And I guess as a quick follow-up to that, do residents, obviously using tax information, if we were to switch to a model where it was based on how many years you lived in town, would you be able to feasibly track if someone were to say, you know, they empty nested and wanted to downsize the community? If they moved to another property, would they be able to roll over the years in town? If they started getting a program for a few years, move to a smaller house and continue getting that benefit? Or would they have to reapply and start the year one again?
That's a great question. I haven't never had anybody that, that switched assessments because they've downgraded, right? And then, uh, because realistically, all the system does is pull their current assessment. So I guess as long as that new assessment is less than their old assessment, it would take that number. Because it goes to the person, it doesn't track the, you know, the address, it tracks the person and what their, what real estate they own. So then it's up to us to make sure if they have multiple properties, that it doesn't exceed ten times the, the current income level. That's another one of the tests that you have to meet, so.
And then the concern be, that's assessment, people with smaller houses, maybe considering, you know, similar to Council of Newtios, that they boosted up and assessed value compared to the larger houses, lost value. That would be another concern is the changing kind of assessment. That's why we have it every five years. And if we were to go to a steps program like this, Jason, would it be easier to do every five years? The council could come back and say, well, if this is a reasonable program, we could either increase the percentage, the half a percent, maybe three quarters comparable to budget or make any other adjustments to benefits. Like say, well, we've had some tax increases or other issues come up. So we want to increase the annual benefit from one to two or one to one fifty per year as a medical.
Yeah, I think when we talked about this a year ago, we, you know, we said that we could do that. I mean, I, I really don't want to change it too much because people get used to it. But if we find that it's not working, the whole point of reviewing it every five years was to do exactly that. Find out if there are any problems and nip them in the bud before they, you know, spiral for ten, twenty years, whatever.
Which unfortunately is the issue you're dealing with now.
Yeah.
All right, that's it for me for at least for now, in a council.
Yeah, so we're still talking about an income qualifying program. Right?
Yep.
So that doesn't fix some of those problems. The other thing, this program by our charter is called a tax relief program, is that right?
Elderly tax relief, yeah.
Okay, so it's not called?
Well, it's had a bunch of names, but everybody's revising it a little bit. Ordinance sixty, uh, I don't know where sixty came from. You have to be sixty-five or older to get in the program. So if your spouse is sixty-five, I think you could be sixty. That, I don't know what that is, but then it was called the freeze. It's always AKA the freeze. Maybe Bob knows, Bev probably.
That's on the TV.
It was originally a tax freeze, Jason.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think balancing or taking into consideration the administrative headache, if you will, and making it easier for residents to understand has a lot of benefit. But I also agree that, you know, we want to make sure that we're not reducing anyone's benefits, you know, anyone who has benefits right now and understand how we might be potentially capping benefits as we look to the future. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from council members?
I agree with Tammy on some things in Katie too about, you know, I didn't realize it was more of an almost like a rebate, right? You get money back from, yeah.
Right, your tax.
Same idea. And then I think she's there or someone mentioned earlier that we're actually losing people.
Jason said that, yes.
I kind of missed it, so I apologize. It's there. Do you know, there's a reason?
Various reasons, um, deaths, people moving out of town, moving in with family, or something like that. Jason, do you have any other input regarding that?
Yeah, sometimes people will be over income. They've taken out money out of their retirement program or something like that. And it'll push their householding, because it's house, it's based on the household income. So these incomes you see here on this chart are, it could be one person, it could be two, it could be five. And we don't know. When they file with us, they have to tell us if anybody's living with them. And if they're, you know, if they have a granddaughter, grandchild or son or daughter that's living with them, that income is supposed to count as well. And when they sign on their application, they're attesting that they, you know, that they're not lying to us. And that is actually their household income. Sometimes they're over, you know, if somebody moved in and they're truthful, then we might find out that, you know, twenty thousand puts them over the limit.
That's how the state does it as well, right, Jason?
Um, there's as much lower, no, no. It's based off of your federal filings and its individual income or married income. So it's not household.
I just had. Yes, sorry. How are we reaching out to besides Facebook or online? I mean, is there mailer that can, if it's not already happening, go out to like an age group, right? So they have an idea. I don't know.
About this program?
Right.
You know, unfortunately, most of our older population isn't on the computer, but it's on our webpage. I don't have a Facebook page because that would be a death wish for the assessors office. People don't like me.
Our social service, uh, human services.
We give the information to Bev, Bev has it, she knows, she points people to our office all the time. Also, Kim at the senior center lets, is, lets people know about the program. We have a flyer we sent out. Karen, my deputy, has gotten a lot more active in doing those types of things. We actually send all of the applications to all the people that are supposed to be in the program. So nobody misses on account of, uh, they forgot to do it, that's for sure. We, we're on top of it. But that doesn't mean new people don't know, you know, don't know about it.
Information also, don't we set? The tax bill. Insert.
I don't think so. We could always add it.
Well, it's too late by the time the tax bill goes out, Lisa. So we, we do put it in the spring newsletter. That goes out through the rec. This is a crazy year. I don't know if it got in the spring newsletter this year, but.
It definitely includes it in our senior center newsletter and services.
And I think back off of Council of Newtios comments, one thought I had, Jason, if we do move forward and at some point update this, go for the hearing, we, you know, revise the program, would you at any point be comfortable or willing to host maybe a seminar at the senior center? And invite folks there to kind of do a presentation of the program? And, you know, maybe it can be not just e-blasted, maybe called or whatever connection networks Kim has to reach out to seniors and say, hey, there's this event. And it could be hosted at the senior center or the library, or even in the council chambers, if there's enough people that are interested in learning about it. But that's a way we can get folks out and, you know, use our dialer ride program to get people in that maybe can't even afford a vehicle to drive to town to see stuff that's on the poster boards, so.
Sure, I think, you know, together with, you know, Karen and I could do something, we could even do something midday, which is a lot easier for, maybe that's what you're thinking, but might, you know, benefit them more if we could get there during the day and put on a little presentation. Of course, that means I'd have to close my office till we get an extra body in there, so. Well, we can figure something out.
It's a feature.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hey, Jason, thanks for putting this together. I, I remember talking, uh, I think it was last term in the council. It's just a matter of people putting their heads together and trying to figure this stuff out. Or is there another solution that we're not talking about? Are you talking about more headcount? Or what do you see as, as a solution to this?
Well, um, the last time I presented you guys, um, and we started talking about benefit changes, I had polled the state or other towns that have a local freeze and the towns that responded to me. I think I had about thirteen, fourteen responses. Some towns were underwater with it, where it became too expensive and they had to start over or eliminate the program altogether. So there is a fine line on how much you, you want to give away to keep your low income elderly people in town. Rotten, I think it was, was, they were giving like fourth, the average homeowner was getting like three or four thousand dollars off their tax bill. Now their tax bills were more than ours are, but yeah, so they had to revamp the whole program. And when they did that, they, they upset a lot of people because they went from these large reductions to, you know, hundreds of dollars instead of thousands of dollars. So, um, but in doing that, I, I have that, that document somewhere, uh, because I kept track of everybody who, what they were doing and what, how they felt the programs were running. And the majority of towns mimic the circuit breaker program, which is the state program, that's a credit program. So like we're talking about a credit, a certain amount of dollars that if you, if you escalate as you go, then you can kind of accommodate for mill rate increase. But, you know, it's not exact. So you're guessing on your best data. And we have twenty years of it to determine what the average increase in taxes are for each person. And then, all right, so do we give them a hundred dollars more each year? Um, I think most people would be happy that you're giving them, you know, a change, not just like a flat number. So, uh, but I, I think it's the way to go, fine tuning it to make sure that everybody, it works for everybody that's already in the program. That's, that would be my, that's the hard part right now.
Okay, but who would, who would be involved in accomplishing that besides you?
Uh, we've reached out to Bob because he was part of it before. He's very knowledgeable. I would have to talk to our vendor, our software vendor, that would actually have to write a program and put it in, put it in. They have a bunch of programs already inputted and it depends on the towns. Our quality data is our vendor and they, um, I think they do administrative package for a hundred and sixty out of a hundred and sixty-nine towns in the state. So they have all different kinds of scenarios. I actually reached out to them in the beginning and said, can you run our numbers through what all the other program, all the other towns do? You know, just so I can get, if, is there twenty different variations of this program? Can you run our numbers through those so we can see what that is? And I don't know if I asked at the wrong time or they weren't interested or what happened. But that's, that was part of why we had so many delays in the beginning of this, because I just, I couldn't get an answer out of them.
All right, I just, you know, I'm struggling with this because it doesn't seem like we've come too far since the last time we talked about it.
We haven't, to be honest. We, I mean, this is, I don't like to give away money. This, to me, it's, I don't mind that you guys, it's up to you to decide what you want to do. But I, I have to grow the grand list. So every time I write an exemption, that means everybody else pays a little bit more. So I understand the premise of it and I agree with it and I, but at the same time, I, if I'm the one that has to make the decision, then I'm either the good guy or the bad guy. So that's, it's on you guys. I give you all the, all the apples in my basket and then you have to pick out the one you like.
Okay, thank you. Add on to John's question, I can't recall what our decision was last term. I know there was talk about a subcommittee and I don't know if we want to have council members involved with it or just instantly task, you know, Jason, services and maybe invite one member of the public, being Bob or Vino, to kind of work on this and submit a report back to the, to the council, the recommendations before we go through an ordinance process in a public hearing. Because I think originally, Jason, you might know, and Bob probably would know, the original group that made this ordinance, it was a subcommittee where it was like a council member and members of a staff that worked on it before they brought it back. And it was comparable to the, our subcommittee.
Bob just raised his hand.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, Steve, Bob, we're being on two nine six, why gold? Yeah, you know, I'm taking notes of the discussion, trying to get a sense of where Jason and I might go in the intervening time between, you want to circle back on a report. You know, I, I've got a couple of action items, but you know, one of them might be would the council consider reconvening a study group, you know, a bipartisan?
uh, a study group, you know, a bipartisan community study group of both, because this impacts, as Jason mentioned, you know, essentially raises everyone else's taxes by half a percent from businesses to residential owners. And, and that's pretty much the idea of the tax freeze where that came from. Uh, we could do that, but I think what I'm hearing, uh, one of the things that Jason said was something about thirteen other towns have a tax freeze. Some of them are underwater, but maybe what we could do is come back and report. Uh, how do they do it? I don't want to reinvent the wheel. Uh, it's difficult. Uh, you know, Jason is a force of one. He can't get the attention of the software maker to do a custom package for Talend, but how do other people do it? We could come back and report that finding.
I think that would be reasonable, Bob. How, how, I'm, Jason, do you and Bob and perhaps Bev or anyone else that would need to be involved in that conversation or those conversations would need before kind of reporting back again?
Well, I have my results from the last time I asked. I can um share those with them. Um, if Bev wants to sit down and Bob wants to sit down someday, I can share that information with everybody and um I could re-ask my association, but you, you ask the same question twice, you get less answers the second time, seems like. Um, I could also ask the vendor uh again to potentially run some of the other scenarios or at least help explain some of what the other scenarios are, so it's all pro-programmable. So when I fill in my um put off the check mark for my freeze people for, on the grand list every year. Um, and I'm, and I bridge the systems. You know, it asks me which, which freeze we have, so there are other ones in there that I could potentially see. If I could find out what the rules are for each one of them, then I could uh kind of back into what Talents could be like based off some of these other scenarios. But I don't know, time wise, I don't.
Would you probably say each of the budgets before, like, you know, after or sometime of the bill would be, would be reasonable because I know that that's a whole process in itself, or would you want to come back to us at, say, mid to end of May? Then on the situation.
I think the, the mid to end of May is going to be tough because he's trying to get all the information into the system uh, once the mill rate is set. So that, the amount of work with the with not a full staff, I think that would be challenging for him to try to work on this as well. I mean, Jason, speak up if, if I'm wrong.
Oh, I like where you're going.
We don't want to keep delaying this forever either, but I, I just know the next few months with um, first of all, getting the bills prepared in order for them to go over to the tax office, the next level. There's a lot of work that happens there in a short amount of time. And then, action season, you have people coming in and, and, you know, disputing their, their auto bills and things like that. So what's a better timeframe and maybe we can try to get a meeting together with um Bob Rubino and you and I and Beverly and just try to sit down and hash some things out and come back with a better proposal.
Um, so realistically, you know, with the extension on the grand list, uh, BAA is meeting in April. I'm on vacation a week in April. You want this done in May, we don't, that means, I mean, I still, just the two of us in our office. Um, things that will slow down a little bit in between. Um, but as, as uh we get the board ready for their we have to put together packets for each one of the appeals. We have twenty plus appeals. Uh, I have to start doing some inspections on crumbling foundations that are part of the appeals. There's really not a ton of time if you want to get it in effect for this budget. I know that when we talked last time, you talked to um, Rick Conti, I think, and he said that we didn't need to go to that the council could approve any changes to the benefit without having to go do anything. Um, we can, we can look at the ordinance, but um, I don't believe you have to do anything for approval. But you might, you can look, we can look into that, but.
Confirmed, but I almost, I almost looking to rush it, it's mostly, I think, I share Regan's point, you know, I mean talking about it and then COVID hit and we kind of lost it for two years. I don't expect anything like that to cause a delay, but I wouldn't want us to just kind of convene for this meeting and then, you know, six to eight months later say, well, what are we doing about it? You know, and make sure we're kind of, at lea- at least it's, it's in the peripheries.
Yeah, I mean, the program isn't going to it's still going to work this year regardless if we make a change or not, and we'll have to just check each one of those tax bills before they go out, so we run through these hundred and sixty-nine. You know, in the two years of COVID, this, because of the um um, oh geez, what were they called? The uh, the orders that what was that?
Executive orders.
Yeah, executive orders. We um, nobody had to apply, so everybody was just approved for this program that was already in the program, so this is a year where we don't have uh, we have applications from everybody. So it's, it's, this is a tough, this is an extra application year because we don't know people's income and it's in every other year. So we only get eighty applications a year typically, um, but we should get all of them this year. Extra work.
Before everything you guys do, um so is it something that we come back to June or July, we can do a reduction in the second tax statement, you know, I, I get two, right? September, when January or something, tax bills, right?
We send one bill out for property.
The town splits the bill in half um out of courtesy. It's not a, I mean, that is how it's done, but we don't it's not two separate bills. It's one bill with two, two payments. It's really due July first. But the town has adopted the option to allow for two payments.
To me, it's two bills. But, right, so I apologize for that, so I guess that answers my question. You couldn't do anything.
Right, because we don't print the bills in January again, and that adds very significant cost because we had to do that a few years ago when the whole state is in turmoil with the budget. And um, I mean, I think we were looking at it like an extra five or ten thousand dollars just to do that, so. I would, you know, unless, Jason, you know, some miracle that this could turn around very quickly. I would say we hear it, how it is, and then try to work in August, maybe. Would that be a more reasonable time for you to try to get finalized?
Realistically, I think we've, I've beaten up the scenarios other than looking at something totally different. So I don't think it's too hard to determine uh what would be very similar to everybody else's tax bill based on a credit versus the assessment freeze. Um, I know Tammy doesn't like that, but if it's, if it's a similar verdict, when you're, you know, just getting about it at a different way, I mean, I can, I can try to do that and then talk to quality and see if it's something that they can even do, uh, but to, because if it's not something they already have, then if they have to write new programming, they might tell me, sorry, six months. I don't, you know, I don't even know that. I didn't think about that.
So, so Jason, I guess I'm kind of looking at this. I think there's multiple issues. There's multiple things we need to answer here. One, the intent of the ordinance. Two, um, you mentioned the ordinance wasn't applicable to excess land. Um, three, popped into my head, like you said, what about if they find out they've got a crumbling foundation? I guess what would be helpful to me is, what are the scenarios that we need um, when we talk about ordinance sixty and the idea of a tax freeze? Um, so all the different things that we didn't know about or didn't think of when we put it in place. I'm sorry, you really, you sound like crap. I'm so sorry.
I'll mute myself when you're talking, sorry.
Oh, don't worry about it. Um, but all, all the things that we didn't think about, that we didn't know about then, that we need to consider now. Um, if, if we were to do a straight tax freeze at the point that somebody is applying, I don't know if that, if that scenario is, is on here. Um, I know you have current benefits. I'm assuming that is how much we're writing off of the person's um current tax bill, so I would just like to understand if we were to freeze it, what would that impact be? And then so we have all the questions that we need. The freeze plus your scenarios, plus Bob's scenario. I think that at least gives us something to start digging into to discuss, and I would honestly see this as a multiple council meetings to discuss options and where we want to go with it. Before we can come up with something more definitive.
Yeah, I'd be agree with that. Donald says any objections, I think, yet. It doesn't need to be a multi-step process, both for timing for Jason and Bob and if everybody would talk to each other as well as for us to deliberate, so.
I think we need to decide what we want the ordinance, what, what we try to accomplish.
What you're trying to accomplish, but also try to uh streamline the property process as well. But still get, accomplish what you want.
I think that's important, but.
Put too many technical things in place, or do this or do that, then it turns into the nightmare he's facing right now.
Right.
And I think we also need clarification on whether or not we have to go to a hearing or not because it sounds like there's some conflicting.
That's like last though, right? Like that's after we
I'm kind of looking at reverse engineer, you know, I want to make sure, whatever, we have to do a double hearing and pass a new ordinance or a revised ordinance, I'd like to know. How we get to that point and work our way back to the.
Yeah, if you do a new ordinance, you definitely need to. If the, I have to read the ordinance again, it's been a while. Um, if it has language in there that allows the council to adjust certain pieces of it, then you don't have to.
I believe that's the way it was written, but obviously you could definitely want to check that. I just, what they, what they didn't think about in the beginning was that when somebody was going to have a, a veteran reduction, okay, that's another reduction on top of it. Then the system tries to do the map and if that, that veteran benefit changes from one year to the next. Um, also, if the house is improved, we're supposed to increase the assessment by the improvement value. So it's kind of hard to do when somebody adds a deck that costs twenty thousand dollars, but our system generates a value of ten thousand dollars. My father kept the old appraisal software um, because they thought originally that the value had to be added in at the original valuation value. So if, if your deck was put on last year but the house had been there for thirty years and you had to use, you had to go back to the last revaluation, it was a lot of that stuff um got unnoticed, but any of those improvements um, were supposed to influence the value, and I don't think they did over time. Because these people that have been in the program for twenty years I can't, I can't think they haven't done anything to their homes over that time, you know what I mean? So tracking.
I think I've probably done like three things to it.
I've been to your house, don't sell it short. Anyway, um, I'm up for meeting with Bob and anybody who wants to talk about it. Um, we're over the, the BAA application period, so I have a little bit of time coming up. Before I go on vacation in mid-April.
Alright, so you think, Jason, at this point, based off of the conversations you've heard from counselors, you and Lisa, Bob and anyone else that's at the FBA, anyone that's, you know, pertinent to the conversation can come together and kind of go over what was discussed and see what can be provided as maybe a master recommendation as well, I think, because there are three new counselors on, you know, getting some of that state or, you know, other town program information out to them as well. I can try to look back to what minutes those would be from or what packet it might have been in, but.
We'll get back to you.
No, thank you, thank you, Jason, and I know you're probably staying up to, we have a coming foundation update next. So eight point three, there's no other discussions. Eight point three crumbling foundation updates. The additional and again, this is more of an update, like, if there's questions or commentary, it's appreciated.
As you know, we are in the center of the crumbling foundation situation or disaster. I know Jason's been adding um some properties back. He'll get into the details. He's been getting some new properties that come on, but it hasn't been as much in the new year. He's gonna speak a little more about it.
Um, I don't, I have the agenda item.
Unfortunately, we could not get the agenda tonight. There's some, some technical issues.
Can he share? Can he pull up? And he can share the agenda?
I don't know. Are you able to pull up the agenda item from the internet? Because we couldn't get it before. I had, tried to have Mike do it and he couldn't get it into the chat.
I, I think I forwarded it to myself, let's see.
You know, there, there's been a lot that Steve Wernher was very much involved with legislation that went forward through the state to uh start an insurance program to help many households get back or um foundations repaired. There have been a lot of repairs that were put into place. You know, we, we did some things for waiving some of the building inspection fees for that as well as the assessor's office getting temporary um reductions in the assessed value until they got their foundations repaired for, I think the legislation was for, was it three or five years that let you? Had you, you did have the um yeah, and you had that a minute ago. There it is. Alright.
Anybody see that? Off I do, if I can close it or whatever. Um, I'll just read it off to you, seems you don't have it. Uh, crumbling foundations, Talend is unfortunately the center of crumbling foundation disaster. Legislation was passed in two thousand sixteen to allow for assessment reductions for residential properties. It was later amended to include residential condominiums as well. Assessor's office has been processing applications for homeowners to grant these reductions. Um, let's see, our item summary, the crumbling foundation problem has been an issue before I started working in Talend in two thousand and twelve. It quickly became obvious that the, that this problem was more than just a few homes and that there was a serious defect in concrete foundations. Several of the most affected towns met with CROG, which is the Capital Regional Council of Government, to determine the what, where and why. Also, at the same time, figure out how to uniformly and fairly allow for assessment reductions because those who were discovering the problem had lost substantial market value in their homes. Former town manager Steve Wernher and I were part of the working group to help set the parameters for the program. Public Act sixteen dash forty-five, uh, an act concerning crumbling foundations was passed by legislation effective ten one, two thousand sixteen. Public Act sixteen dash forty-five, an act concerning crumbling foundations was passed by legislation effective ten one, two thousand sixteen. To allow for a reduction in the assessments and start a fund to replace foundations. In order to receive a reduction, a homeowner must complete an application to start the process, obtain a licensed engineer's report. Diagnosing the defect and cause, that caused by pyrotite aggregate. And allow the assessor's office to inspect the home to determine the severity. Reductions are based on the assessor's severity rating. Assessment reductions were originally set to expire after a five-year period, but due to many homes remaining unrepaired after five years. Legislation was amended in two thousand twenty-one to allow for reductions into perpetuity.
Okay.
Basically, that's the background. Really what happened in the area was. Different towns were doing different things. Which led to different reductions and not being very uniform between. Between towns and, and what type of reductions we're giving. So Talon would give a ten or twenty or thirty percent decrease on the property. And then Stafford would give somebody ninety percent off their property. So everybody started going, hey, we can't do this, we can't affect the market like this. Especially not knowing where the end result is, you know, where are we going to land? So Steve and I went to Hartford and met with those people. We, Coventry was there, Ellington was there, South Windsor, Manchester. A lot of the big budding towns that had problems, and we came up with this program that allowed for a reduction. Based on the assessor's determination and a severity rating. So when I go into a house, I do an inspection and determine. Is it a A, B, C, D, or E? And A would be as if somebody had a foundation that we knew was bad because they had a positive core test taken. But there's no visible signs, there's no cracks. Still spider cracking like you, like you've heard about, or so you see pictures of. The pictures that you do see online are the worst ones that you've ever seen, because. Of course, we're trying to make the problem look as, as bad as possible for the people that have the money that could help fund some of the problems. And once you have the problem, it's only going to get worse over time. Nobody's come up with a solution to stop pyrotite from reacting and re-react. So we know that just over time, it's going to get worse, and it has affected market value. So in two thousand and sixteen was the first year that we started accepting applications. And this Excel worksheet kind of shows where we were. In two thousand and sixteen. We had forty-eight. Different applications to the cost of a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Two thousand seventeen, fifty-four applications at one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Two thousand eighteen, we had thirty-eight. Applications at a hundred thousand dollars. And at that year in two thousand eight, eighteen, we also had three houses repaired. So it did bring some value back onto the grand list. Same thing, two thousand nineteen, that was a big year. I think the reason for two thousand nineteen being such a big year was because. Visibility of two thousand eighteen, seeing how many of these homes were actually lifted. You drive down the road and you would see houses actually up in the air and wonder what's going on. And it caused a rush. In, in applications to the state to get money. So more people are now applying for reductions, and then more people are actually getting repaired too. So. This spreadsheet just shows the annual numbers that I'm dealing with, two thousand and twenty, very low number, only nineteen. And it was only at forty-two thousand, which means a lot of these were probably additions. Not even the original house, so a lot less reductions in twenty. And then in twenty-one, again, it's been light. Talon is at the. At the, in the lead, I should say, for homes being repaired, we're up to seventy repaired. And another fifteen that have been repaired that have not received any tax reductions. So people did it on their own dollar, or the homes were purchased. Maybe at a discount, and then the, the people that bought them fixed them. On their own, so. That's, this is an update on where that number is. What the total assessment loss has been. And all that's been repaired, seventy that have been repaired, what that's done back to the grand list and the tax amount that's done. One hard thing to gauge is the compounding effect of this. So these people that are. That are on the sixteen list, some of these have been repaired, but they're not in my total, because my spreadsheet is, is. Crazy large already, because I've been tracking this for six years, and the data that is involved is, there's a lot of data, so. The number of these that are still receiving a reduction, obviously, in sixteen are, could be on seventeen and eighteen and nineteen. So these numbers are just the timestamp of the people that have been reduced for that grand list year. I don't even want to know what that number is. I, I don't know if anybody else does, but this number is high enough to me. Compounding effect of this was bad, and Steve and I talked about this at the very beginning. And said that we really need to get ahead of it, and we did, and. Part of that is. The amount of people in Talon that have applied and received money for not only the fix, but for testing. You can get reimbursed up to four hundred dollars for a. A visible test and. What is it, up to two thousand dollars or fifty percent of your cost if you do a core test? And Talon leads the way in that too. So we've had very active homeowners, advocates. People that have been part of the Williams, one of Bev's neighbors and Bob's neighbors over there that had their. Home fix on Google. They. Do I have to admit somebody that wants in? You got it. So Talon has done very well with it. We're also the most affected, so. Unfortunately, the news is good and bad. We've got a good, a lot of people that are out there fighting the battle for everybody else. But we've also have lost a lot of money in the assessment based on these problems that we have.
I guess, Jason, one quick question. See a continued trend of new applicants being lower than what's being repaired. Is the new. Bring off, or are we kind of waiting for a second, you know, round? Seeing these hairline cracks.
Well, it is tough, because a lot of people have finished basements. There's, there's people that find out every day, and then they call me and they ask questions that I think they should have asked five years ago. And I say, where, you know, where were you then? And they said, ah, I just didn't think that was me, or I only have this. Exposed area around my hatchway that has cement. So I didn't think to look, I never go up the hatchway, or, you know, whatever the case is, so. I'm surprised at how many people find out for the first time when I'm talking to them on the phone, you know, or, you know, they've just found out. When this has been very public for. You know, for at least five years, six years.
That's very, thank you.
So Jason, is the seven hundred and thirteen thousand, is that the balance of, of what was, what for the homes that have not been repaired yet?
Seven twelve?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the accumulation of all the gains and law, all the losses over the years.
Okay, so that's not what we're currently, so it's not net, like I'm looking at the seven hundred and twelve, one seventy-seven.
Right, if you just add the individual years. For, you know, six years now on, it's seven hundred thousand in, in tax loss.
And then we're, so. Currently, I guess what I'm trying to get, currently, where it's an impact of half a million dollars that we're saying?
Yep, so the two hundred thousand, take the two hundred and four off of that, yep, so. There you go, yep, half a million dollars. And that's not the compounding, that was. Yeah, I don't have enough time to get into trying to figure out which, you know, yeah, I don't, I don't even know how to do that. That's too many worksheets.
And the, when I look at your list, you have twenty sixteen, and then you have the BOAA, so was it thirty-eight? And ten more by assess, like by the assessment appeal process?
Correct, yep, so we have forty-eight total that year, thirty-eight people applied in time for the grand list, and then I let ten other people go through the BAA. Some towns don't do that. I, I let them go to the board. Because I feel like if they have the problem and we haven't signed the grand list yet, then they should have the right to get that reduction.
So I guess what kind of interesting, I hear, the people back in twenty sixteen have actually gotten their foundations repaired.
Let's see, I don't, let me stop sharing for a second. I have another spreadsheet that may answer that question.
Yeah.
What was the number repaired that year? So I was reading that as there were zero foundations repaired in twenty sixteen. Not that zero of those people have ever had it, but.
So I have not updated this, my spreadsheet, I'm not going to share it with you, because it's got everybody's names and everything on it.
Jason, if in two thousand sixteen, you had forty-eight people who applied. Years, you have, you know, in two thousand eighteen, three got repaired, nineteen, fourteen got repaired. Some of those repairs could have been the people from two thousand sixteen.
Correct, yeah, yep, yep.
We don't know exactly which years were people were repaired, but.
I go back into my spreadsheet. When, when I get the certificates of completion that come from the building department, and I highlight each one of the ones that have been repaired. I have not done that for this year yet. I did all I could just to get that worksheet together so we could have the totals, but I have twenty in two thousand sixteen that have been fixed out of the forty-eight. And there could be, you know, we only, we had a few this year, there could be a couple more on that list. As I scroll down, I'm looking at their actual names right now, am I? You can't see my screen, right? And I recognize a few more of these that I know have been fixed, so there's probably another. There's probably another five to that twenty that were fixed in two thousand and sixteen, and I can update that for you and, and share that with you if you want. Next week or something, when you get back in the office.
Okay, um. I don't, I don't think I've got any other questions.
Your check fell by Councilmember.
Dog questions, this can be, goes up pretty good. Thank you, TV, no, 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 it's good to. So. What have we done? Have we done anything more? The state to keep advocating, or you just, because you don't hear it as much.
It's gotten kind of quiet. There, there was a new, so this past year, legislation was passed to. Extend the five-year reduction period to, into perpetuity, so that was a big thing, because. If it didn't, that meant I had to contact these other hundred and eighty-five people and tell them, sorry, your assessments are going back to. You know, maybe it's not a hundred and eighty-five, it's, you know, the, the people that were in that original. Five-year period, so the two thousand and sixteen grand list people. I would have to go and call those eighteen people or whatever left over and say, I'm putting your assessment back to full value. You have the right to appeal it, but we don't have a program anymore, so. The original sixteen dash forty-five was repealed to say into perpetuity, so until the homes were fixed. So an update on that is that. This year, they wanted to revise that, because into perpetuity, to me, isn't fair for. Those out there that have received money, that, but aren't fixing their home. So I actually submitted testimony. This year for that to be revised again. I think I was the only one that submitted testimony, but. That I think it should be based on whether or not they're trying to fix their home. I don't think it's fair for people that, a few people that I know in town that have received money from their insurance companies. And they're just sitting on that dollar amount, so. Just, you know, getting a continued assessment reduction when. They've elected to either save the money or. I don't know, buy a mobile home or some, something, you know, I don't know what they're doing with their money, but they've, I know of three that have received monies from. Insurance companies prior to insurance companies denying all the claims, and they just. They just sit there with their assessment reduction, you know, and they have for years now, and will continue now that it's. It's allowed forever, so I suggested a new method of gauging. If they've received monies and if they've applied through SIPSEC for more money through the state. That, that might be a way to. Fix a situation, which also means that people will have to reapply, which could also cause a huge problem for me. But I think it's fair to the town that people aren't sitting on reductions when they've received money already, so. I might be the only one, but I, I just don't think that's fair to the rest of the taxpayers too. For the few that, that are trying to take advantage of the system. So that's an update.
So if I understand from like talking to people months ago, walking around. Some people still on waitlist, right? Like some people. Program under the.
Yep, yep, the, the, the new legislation last year allowed the SIPSEC. Well, it used to be called the captive, but that's the program that's administrating all the money to the, to the. The people that have waited long, you know, their number has been called to be fixed. So SIPSEC is basically an insurance claim company that's run by the state. They get the money from the state, and then they pay out the contractors that are doing all the work. The money goes directly to the contractors as they progress through the job. They've, that, that was another thing, was that company was due to sunset, I think last June or this June. But they, they extended that as well, because the programs worked so well, and they've also asked for another hundred million dollars. Which passed for, through four years. The first ask was in two thousand sixteen, was for a hundred million over five years. This is a hundred million over four years. That passed, so they're, they've, you know, filled their pockets back up, but they've also given money out to. As many people as they've received money for, so they have, so people are pending. If they're, they've given all their paperwork and they meet the criteria, and I know they have different terms for it, I hope I don't screw it up. And then people that have, that are sitting and waiting for money are in another group. And they're just waiting for that check to actually be. Sent to, to their contractor so they can start, so there's, there's definitely two different levels. You've made a, a level where you've given all your paperwork and you meet the criteria, and then the second criteria is, okay. Your number's finally been called because of where you are in line, and now, now you're just waiting on your, your approval from. Their contractor to get started. So, yeah, I mean, it's a, people could be waiting for five years for sure. And if they're a category two or one, which are the, the least severe. Based on the engineers' reports, then they could be, it could be forever, you know. The severity three rating is the worst, and those people are the ones that have been fixed first. But that has nothing to do with our office. The severity rating comes from the, from the engineers and the SIPSEC program. Our, our ratings are five different steps, and it's based on what we determined was a fair assessment reduction. So there are two different. Two different things that we look at there.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Counselor, thank you.
Are there any other questions from Councilmembers? Alright, Jason, we, we hit you up twice for some. All right, Jason, we, we hit you up twice for some context, so, but we can let you go now. Thank you for all your work and touching base with us about this tonight.
Thanks, council.
Rest. All right. So that brings us to item 8.4. Actually, don't have any appointments to vacancies on various boards, but anyone in the public that isn't on one, take a look at the packet or go to email vacancies at tallinn.org if you'd like to learn more about what is available. It's a volunteer. Nine, there is no old business. So ten, report of each town manager.
I've presented my budget to, to your workshops. And Thursday night, we will have the public hearing on the town manager's proposed budget. Haven't been too many questions from the public so far. But we'll see what happens Thursday evening when we present that. The ARPA subcommittee is meeting tomorrow night. We changed the meeting from Thursday to tomorrow. And we will be meeting in Zoom only tomorrow night. And it's not a heck of a lot on the agenda. We're going to go over the spreadsheet and maybe chat about some things. I did attend a US Treasury seminar yesterday that outlined some of the, the new rules and the reporting requirements. And there's, there's a streamlined rule for if you go under the revenue loss recognition, which gives us $10 million and under, you can let your, it all fall under there without having to go through that significant calculation that we tried to do last year to estimate our revenue loss. They're just giving us a flat. Well, we, we don't get 10 million, but in our case of 4.2 million, whatever we get. We can put that all under the selection of the $10 million limit revenue loss and the reporting requirements are much, much easier to manage. And that's for anything to do with town operations. So if you're buying fire trucks or you're buying different pieces of equipment, things like that, it's it's just much easier to manage the grant reporting requirements. So I did share, I think I shared the new toolkit that came out with, yeah, CCM has a new ARPA toolkit package. I thought I sent it in the.
Give us a new toolkit.
I didn't send it in the email with a language. Thought I did. Well, I'm not going to bother going searching my emails. I'll send you the link again. Yeah, CCM just came out with a new, they had that ARPA toolkit before and it's on their website. But I'll, I'll find the link and send it to you. And there's a lot of different scenarios of what other towns have done. They did some surveys of other towns to see how they've used the money. So there's some, you know, some options there to think about currently. Looking at the mental health issues and just waiting for some final information to vote before the, the mental health task force before we come back with a proposal to town council on that particular process. I know we've, we've just been so busy in the office with the budget stuff that off the top of my head right now, I can't think of so many other things we've been dealing with.
Okay. That brings us to item 11, adoption minutes. We're going to break this up into two different votes because there actually does need to be amended to 11.1. So I would request a, or entertain a motion to adopt it as amended to update that councilman Nuccio was not absent and was present for the meeting. So that would be the only update to that meeting minutes is that I incorrectly stated. You were, you were not here when you were here. Yes. So anyone want to make that motion? So my councilman, you check, is there a second? Second vice chair Regan, all those, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, is this unanimous? So 11.2, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as provided in 11.2. So my councilmember, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilman Nuccio, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Is you unanimous, court funds, council?
There were seven email communications that came in. One was about the waterline extension, one regarding ARPA funds, one regarding virtual project, one regarding heat pumps, two regarding the budget and one regarding solid waste.
Thank you, councilmember. So that brings us to item 13, person's reports. Some of it was already covered, obviously the budget hearing on the 24th. So anyone would like to participate? That meeting is hybrid and the library program room, or you can submit testimony or submit your thoughts and input at town council. Call that or our final budget meeting will be the 29th. In addition, next week, you have our joint meeting with the PDC and EDC on the Affordable Housing Trust. So that will be another meeting to see in the future and the budget itself for the schedule. With the advertising of fifth, with the annual presentation on April 18th and all the ghost training plan and references on the May 3rd. Otherwise, the only other update I have is the town manager search update. We have 13 applicants at this time. The application was extended to the 30th due to the council beginning to review applications the following week. So we should be getting a final report. The man that one sent out today or later this week with an update. But all right, the final count will be sent to councilors next week. And at that point, we'll convene to begin the first level of review. And that is it for me. That's 14 communications and petitions from councilpersons. Councilman, your check?
You said we did get you.
You did get it?
Yeah. It doesn't, but it said, our bunch of other stuff in front of it.
Okay. Then I'm not going crazy.
Listen, it's a fun train to be on.
Crazy train.
I was just wondering when we're going to get an update on Miracle Fail?
We're, the, the engineers are still working on the study with that. So I'll touch base with Chuck to see where they're at. They were hoping that sometime in April, they would have it concluded.
And after hearing the new, the new leaks rather, we're soon, we talked about for their input, but.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. That was, I think the intent was to get the study.
Study concluded.
Oh, and I just wanted to, a side noise reported it earlier. The committee meetings. He, like I said, Dave Garrett mentioned the drainage issue. Are you, is the town aware that crossfarms that there's, they have rains a lot? It flows into another field or sometimes it has games.
Worseness?
Because of frost farms.
I'm not aware of it, but possibly public works maybe I'll check into it.
Right, check with Bruce because he, they mentioned it at that meeting. He actually said he even pulled up the drawing to came to the town hall day. He was really looking into it. So I just wanted to mention that.
Frost farms is flooding?
Yeah, yeah. Something that makes a field unusable. Yeah, something about, and yeah, I would ask Captain Bruce about it too. And I think that's really all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Any other communications and additions from councilors? Seeing none, we'll move to item 15, public list of participation. Any subject in the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. If you're on Zoom, you can hit ease of the race and function or if you're on a mobile device, star nine. All right, going once, going twice. I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:06 PM. So my councilman Nuccio, is there a second? Clicking by councillor Khan, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, unanimous, your adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.